I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. Today's Wednesday, May 8th, 2019. Everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh...the time is 6:30. Please pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note the roll.
Noted.
Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of Item 12B.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other corrections? Deletions, additions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other comments? Roll call.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, public comment on items not on the agenda. Not on the agenda. Moving on. Public hearing.
Does that mean we, uh...
Oh!
We can't address...
I'm sorry, Randy.
Or talk about the chloride in the roads?
It's on the agenda.
Pardon?
I thought it was on the agenda.
Yeah, it is. So is that your way of dealing with it, huh?
Randy, this is public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Chloride is on the agenda, so we're gonna talk about it when we get to it.
Okay.
Okay?
Underdue the... Okay.
Yes. It would be 12C. Uh, public hearing, zoning ordinance 67A point 019, amendments to Section 2.2, Section 3.5, and Article 5. Any public comment?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Hold it. Oh, that's fine.
Open the public hearing at 6:32 PM. Got to propose amendments to Section 2.2.
Larry Rosner, 1830 Cobblestone Lane, Oxford, Michigan. This testimony is related to the proposed text amendment to the agriculture district. Please send these text amendments back to the planning commission with recommendations that they seek input from and collaboration with approximately the 26 property owners which constitutes the entire zoning district. The residents of this district have not been offered an opportunity to participate in the drafting of these amendments, as it was done in meetings that were close to the public and that they were based on opinions and actions of people who do not reside in the district. We live there. Our voices don't count. The amendments as proposed by the planning commission do not move the ordinance in the direction of the master plan and do not adequately protect or preserve the district. The meeting records does not accurately reflect the public statements made by numerous citizens who have spoken on this matter. Their action, concerns, and objections are not contained in the meeting records. How can you possibly make a decision without actually knowing what was said? At the joint PC Township meeting more than a year ago, the famous meeting, the township board members directed the planning commission to address the concerns of the residents. This has not been done. The proposed amendments were created without any involvement from the actual residents of the district. As a matter of fact, planning commissions admitted discussing the issue with people who they thought were residents of the district but who are not actually residents or landowners in the agriculture district. Does this make sense to you? Ask the planning commission for a list of property owners in the agriculture district they consulted with while making these proposed changes and with records on it. No one's talked to me at the planning commission why the residents in the district who are not notified when the issue was being discussed in ordinance review committee meetings. What they were not noticed...that they were not notified to the public. Why can't we work together? Why is a township operating behind closed doors? Why are we not encouraged to work collaboratively with our board to create ordinance, a plan which will benefit the entire community and preserve Oxford's township and character and individually? Why is a township marginalizing the residents in the horse country and enabling an atmosphere where the residents are ridiculed and penalized for trying to preserve something they work hard to create? Forty-three percent of the planning commissions were absent from the 2/28/19 public meeting. The meeting record does not enable those members to review the public comments, and the record does not comply with the requirements of the Michigan statute. Let's press the reset button and do this right. The court has consistently held that procedures outlining in this ordinance enabling act must be strictly adhered to. They found the statute spells out a certain procedure that must be followed to enact his zoning ordinance. If not strictly followed by the ordinance amendment in question, it's invalid. Pursuant to the MEZA amendments or supplements to a zoning ordinance shall be adopted in a specific manner, including the requirement for an accurate record of public comments. It states, "The following required public hearing sessions under Section 306. The zoning commission, planning commission, shall transmit a summary comments received at the hearing and its preserved purpose zoning ordinance, including any zoning maps and recommendation to the legislative body of the local government. There is no valid reason for the planning commission not to create clear and accurate records of a public meeting and clearly and accurately summarize the comments for each individual citizen that provides testimony at a public hearing." Again, let's do it right. An overwhelming majority of landowners in this agriculture district have proved...have provided a testimony and documentation in supporting the amendments to the zoning ordinance that they feel are appropriate for the agriculture district as well as suburban 10-acre districts. Their request for the documentation that they have provided to the planning commission has been ignored. This is a violation of the planning commission bylaws. Why is a planning commission not consulted with residents in the agriculture district regarding the zoning amendments? Why is a planning commission not considered the amendments proposed by the residents within the agriculture district? Why has a planning commission made statements on record? Amendments recommended by residents in this district are illegal without verifying the appropriate legal counsel. The zoning text amendments as provided or purpose by the planning commission fall far short creating an ordinance which...not the master plan. MCL 1.25 dash 320, Section 203, 1. A zoning ordinance shall be based upon a plan. What does the plan say? Do these ordinances, text amendments, preserve and protect the district? Do they allow the equestrian camping associated with legal equestrian activity occurring on our farms and the other use that complements the intent of the district? No, they do not. We have asked for all institutional uses to be prohibited. This includes private schools, churches, halls, wedding temples, and the like. There are numerous locations that...where these can be used in our location. Township, and yes, they can be prohibited in an agriculture district as long as we extend extending all institutional use, and there are other districts which you can operate. Keep in mind, the primary purpose of the agriculture district is agriculture, not homes, not institutions, not schools, not religious institutions, or any other incompatibility and conflicting uses. It is designated for farming and farming operations, raising livestock and animals that are beneficial for people. You couldn't put a farm in the middle of a subdivision or next to an established hospital. Think about it. So why do we want all these things in the middle of our agriculture district? There are only a few handful of agricultural zone properties left in the township. Why would you want to use that agriculture equestrian squandered with so little left? We do not agree to the township's addition of state licensed residential facilities only in the agriculture zoning district. If the planning commission seeks to add this provision to the ordinance, it should be done unilaterally and simultaneous throughout every residential zoning district. The ordinance must also address equivalent density to our residential use and required cessible use approval for why any use that not equivalent to single family. We do not agree with keeping private schools, churches, or any other institution use as permitted use in the hunt country. It is not character with...and is not...and is contrary to the master plan and conflicting land use when evaluated with the goal of the district as stated in the master plan and ordinance, and is not in character of the district. The district does not have the inner structure to support such use, nor do we want prematurely development by trying to improve the inner structure to accommodate such use since the master plan code states these improvements are not planned for the area. The planning commission has failed to do their due diligence regarding the ability to regulate institutional use and instead relies on opinion and speculation. Please request a legal opinion of this issue instead of relying on what people who do not reside in this district think they know. Zoning text amendments that are appropriate for the hunt area have been submitted to the PC by members of the community, and it has been ignored by the planning commission. The amendments confirm...the amendments confirm to the master plan and update the ordinance effectively. The master plan, and I see no reason why the planning commission is not acting on them. Please adopt the amendments as proposed by the residents in the agriculture district. We are requesting that the township make a resolution that they are in opposition to any proposed law which seeks to remove the local jurisdiction controlling zoning regulation of institutional use in the residential district. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
I commend you for being able to go through that without a drink of water. I would've died halfway through that. Any other comments on items not on the agenda?
No, on the public hearing.
Oh, there's public hearing. Excuse me.
We're talking about the zoning changes for ag zoning right now.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
I hope that you'll take the time to read the statement that we've got here. We had a number of things that we wanted to get changed. We went through, and we could still get more of...more signatures if you need them, but we got about half the signatures of everybody, every homeowner, every landowner in the ag zoning to sign a statement saying that we wanted these changes made. And the PC went over...supposedly went over them. There was no notice that any of the meetings had been set up. They're...they said that there was lawyer opinions, that we weren't able to get any letters from anything from the lawyer that said that they had...that he had ruled on this stuff. Some of the stuff that Lauren, the planning...the planner, said that was not allowed in the area, we found out that they were in fact allowed to...like, for example, they said that we couldn't exclude religious organization...religious structures or groups, and we can in fact do that. It said that we couldn't exclude schools, but we can in fact do that. We don't want the traffic there. I know that y'all say, "Well, you know, the neighborhood is gonna grow, and you're gonna have to deal with it." But this is an area that for 90 years...well, I'm sure it's probably been closer to hundreds of years, has been used as an equestrian area. For 90 years, the Metamor Hunt has been diligently keeping this area as quiet and kept in the state that it currently is. Many of us make our living off of the horses there, off of equine businesses, agricultural businesses. We're trying to keep traffic down on the roads. It erodes our businesses. It erodes the neighborhood to have a lot of traffic and a lot of noise. We're trying to stop that. We feel, I personally feel, and many of my neighbors that I've spoken to feel, that we have spent an inordinate amount of time and money and personally, blood, sweat, and tears on my land, and I'm trying to keep it the way the master plan promised it would be got. I feel that we're owed that. The township has a responsibility to stick to its own master plan, and some of the stuff that's happening there is not following the master plan. Our property values are at risk. Our livelihoods are at risk, and I hope that you'll consider that. The...they have made a few of the changes that we've requested to the planning commission. Some of them were just completely ignored, and some of them were changed. I hope that they will recon...I mean, everybody else that I've talked to on other planning boards said that when community asks for certain things, especially a large part of the community asks for certain things to be amended, they always listen to the people in the community, and that's just not happening here. It's kind of appalling. I hope that you'll take that into consideration. I hope that you won't accept the ordinance changes as they are. I hope you'll go back and look at some of the changes that we had hoped for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eunice.
Excuse me, young man.
Oh, jeez.
Randy, I'll tell...Randy, I'll tell you when you can get up. I'll give you the oh hi sign.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna bring this up one more time. Everything that Larry was talking about, working together, as you guys know, ladies, gentlemen, our legal counsel sent you this letter about text amendment. Far as we know, nothing has really come back, and so we're asking, can we all work together based on what Larry was reading there and a copy that you have? Can we work together on this, or do we need to go further? We don't wanna go further. But we would definitely like to have this copy that you folks here have be discussed with us and whoever else, and see if we can get this settled without going further, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 6:49 PM. Got to propose amendments to Section 2.2, Section 3.5, and Article 5, the Charter of Oxford zoning ordinance 67A.
Moved and supported. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes.
Jack, has I read the planning commission? Did they discuss all these resident concerns?
Yes.
So they chose which ones they felt had validity, then? So they weren't ignored, they just didn't think the other ones had validity?
Uh, no. They, uh...they looked at all of them that were presented.
Okay.
Through the ordinance review subcommittee with Lauren, the planner, with Gary Rentrapp, the attorney, Susan Morrison, the attorney, and this is what was presented.
So they weren't ignored, they were considered?
No, they were considered.
In their entirety?
Yes.
Were the residents entitled to a sit-down with the ordinance review subcommittee to take a look at these, make some comments?
I don't know.
I have a...I'm sorry, I have a problem with that.
I do.
I think, is it...it's such an important question to be answered. I think we oughta take the time to allow these people to come in. Not that we're gonna change anything, but at least they'll have a chance to present their side and then bring it back to us.
Or disagree.
Yes. Curtis?
Are you on the first reading now? Is this the discussion, what we're talking about here?
I would rather...
Oh, I mean, is this where we're discussing, the first reading?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that I have another question on it.
Yes.
I'd just like to say that I've read the master plan. I'm pretty familiar with what went down. I've viewed just about every meeting I can think of on television. There's been a number of public hearings and so forth, and I have to say that in all honesty, I side with these residents in the agricultural area. I don't like the idea of the state dictating things to the township, and I agree with Bill Dunn that we should give him an opportunity further to go into this.
Anybody else have a comment? Joe?
Well, you see, even after that meeting, let's say the planning commission ordinance review disagrees, please let them know that, that, okay, I see your point B. We disagree with that. So at least they will know that these are the concerns brought up, and they disagreed or agreed, and why?
I don't agree with everything Larry has in here, but I still think they need a chance in an open forum, probably with the ordinance review subcommittee, as long as everybody's a gentleman and no throwing things. I'll make a motion to send it back to the ordinance review subcommittee.
Second. Good.
Yes, questions?
I have one.
Yes.
There are 16, approximately 16 changes that were indicated in the letter.
Mm-hmm.
What you're doing is preventing those from passing, and what they would like to do is continue working on the ones that aren't in there. So if you put it back, you're just holding off on the 16 that were made.
Correct.
At the time.
Correct.
So if somebody comes in with an apartment or a kennel or something, it's not stopping that. We...from my knowledge of the ordinance review subcommittee, they looked at that letter and all of its substance, and what came out of it was approximately 16 changes to the favor of what the agricultural district in the northeast wanted. While some of this was run against the agricultural districts in our west...northwest district and our southwest district, and some of the other landowners, they thought that was like, okay, this is big. I mean, get these through. So you're throwing out the baby with the bathwater by not approving the 16 that had worked on. Now, the remaining may go back to ordinance review subcommittee. That's my only concern.
Jack, my problem is these people weren't at that review subcommittee to go over the 16 that were...I just think we need to give them a chance to state their case.
I agree.
Again, I don't...
I agree.
I don't agree again, Larry, with everything you've said in here, but I think it should be discussed, and we should get all our ducks in a row. Curtis?
So this process, considering it's approved and it moves forward, where does it go now? Back to the planning commission?
Goes back to the planning commission ordinance review subcommittee. I mean, are we in a hurry to do this, folks?
Well, we've been trying to get it changed for two and a half years.
Are we in a hurry? Can we put it off just a little bit and work on it?
We appreciate it.
Or what you could do, if you think, like what Jack is, if you think what's in here is partially good, pass that, but then motion that, and the rest goes back to the planning commission for further discussion.
What's it gonna hurt to check off the 16?
I don't know.
And then, you know, we know where each other's...where they land on this and where they disagree with it, and we could work on the disagreement, too. Roll call.
What's the motion?
To revert it back to the ordinance review subcommittee to have a public hearing, I mean, to do this in a public setting with the residents there to give their viewpoint.
To include all agricultural districts?
Might as well. And if we're gonna do it, let's do it right.
So you amend your motion, then?
I will amend my motion to include all agricultural districts.
And Trustee Payne will amend her second to the motion.
I do.
Roll call.
Roll call. Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Let's move on. Uh, fire prevention and protection ordinance 95.004, amendments to Section 2612 fireworks. If anybody wants to leave, you can...unless you wanna stick around?
I'm moved to adopt the fire prevention protection ordinance 95.004, the Oxford Township Charter of Ordinance as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Fire department, you got anything? Pete? We fill in a vacancy?
Working on it. Just a brief point to bring up, with all the incidents of the garbage fiasco that's going on, there's all the inference on Facebook and everything, well, I'm just gonna go burn it in my backyard and do whatever. Just a notice to everybody that it is totally illegal, not only by the Oxford Township ordinance, but it's also illegal from the state of Michigan. You cannot burn garbage in your backyard at any time, any place, anywheres. Neither can you burn leaves, building debris, and that kinda stuff, and you have to have a permit anyhow. So please, you know, be patient, try to work things out, but do not be burning garbage, 'cause I don't wanna have to come out to your place. Thank you.
Hey, Pete, before you go, I used your service the other day and thank the guys that responded.
Sure. Hope everything's okay.
Please. Thanks. Uh, on to unfinished business, computer and software upgrades for the township office. It's come to my attention that our Microsoft 7 is not going to be used by the end of the year.
Microsoft 7.
Is it Microsoft 7?
Yes.
Is not going to be able to use it, and we have a lot of computers that that's what has in it. So the group of us got together with IT Wright and came up with some possible purchases of these equipment. Is the list...I can't get into my computer. Is the list on the...
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, not only are we gonna be getting some computers, but we're also gonna get a new hard...what is it, hard drive?
It's server upgrade.
Server upgrade. I think most of those prices are gonna be, what, about $18,000?
Twenty-seven total.
Twenty-seven total?
That's...
And this has been in the budget for some time. We've just carried it over, carried it over, and we haven't acted on it. So what I guess I'm asking is to okay the officials in the township full-time, the ability to order the stuff and have it put in place.
I'll make a motion to accept IT Wright quote number, ITRQ14252, upgrade office workstations in the amount of $10,908.30. We post as follows. $1,0699 of $1,450 to $295,289,970-001 capital outlay, and $249 to $295,289,970-003 computer programming, and $9,209.30, $7,00964.30 to $101,299,970-001 capital outlay, and $1,245 to $101,299,970-003 computer programming. Authorize the township supervisor to sign the purchase agreement.
Second.
Moved and supported by Marge. Marge, any questions? Roll call?
Just like to make a comment.
Yes.
I did read all the list of equipment. Uh, Mr. Ferrari is to be...
what it has in it, so the group of us got together with IT Wright and came up with some possible purchases of these equipment. Is the list, I can't get into my computer, is the list on the...
Yeah.
Okay. Not only are we going to be getting some computers, but we're also going to get a new, what is it, hard drive?
It's server upgrade.
Server upgrade. I think most of those prices are going to be, what, about eighteen thousand dollars?
Twenty-seven total.
Twenty-seven total?
That's...
And this has been in the budget for, for some time, we've just carried it over, carried it over, and we haven't acted on it, so what I guess I'm asking is to okay the officials in the township full-time, the ability to order the stuff and have it put in place.
I'll make a motion to accept IT Wright Quote Number, ITRQ one four two five two, upgrade office workstations in the amount of ten thousand nine oh eight thirty. We post as follows, one thousand six ninety-nine of one thousand four fifty to two ninety-five two eighty-nine nine seventy zero zero one, capital outlay, and two forty-nine to two nine five two eight nine nine seventy dash zero zero three, computer programming, and nine thousand two oh nine thirty, seven thousand nine sixty-four thirty to one oh one two nine 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 seventy zero zero one, capital outlay, and one, and one thousand two forty-five to one oh one two nine 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 seventy one zero zero three, computer programming. Authorize the township supervisor to sign the purchase agreement.
Moved and supported by Marge. Marge, any questions? Roll call?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Yes.
I did read all the list of equipment. Mr. Ferrari has to be commended, it's very good equipment.
Don't forget the girls in the office.
Yeah, I think Deanna did a lot of the legwork.
A lot, a lot of the girls had input, because, you know, they're going to have to use this equipment.
Sure.
And we didn't, we want to make sure they're inclusive.
There's a choice, I read the other beds, too, so...
Yep, 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 they did a lot of the legwork.
But Joe, Joe, help. Was it been moved and supported?
It was.
Roll call.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Don?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
And Trustee Payne?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept IT Wright Order Number, ITRQ one four one five zero, replace a server in the amount of seven thousand eight forty-nine ten, two thousand seven sixty-five thirty, one oh one two nine 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 seventy point zero zero one, capital outlay, and five thousand oh eighty-three eighty, one oh one two nine 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 seventy zero zero three, computer programming, authorize the township supervisor to sign the purchase agreement.
Support. Moved and supported, any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Don?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur?
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Chloriding all of the township dirt roads, I wasn't at the last meeting, I happened to be luckily in Florida and Georgia, but someone came, a couple people came to me ask if they could be put on the agenda for the Township Board to consider this and maybe act on it, so that's what I did. Randy, come on up, buddy, this is your turn.
I'm trying to read what you have up here.
I think if we do it, we're going to be, ended up paying about fifty, fifty-nine thousand or sixty-one hundred dollars?
Just forty-nine.
Fifty-nine thousand would be...
Forty-nine oh fifty-two. We presently pay, I think this year, we're going to be paying around twenty-five to thirty thousand for the ability for the residents to pay half.
Well, you budgeted lower this year than you did last. You had about twenty-three thousand, so you had twenty-four last year. I mean, round the numbers, but that's...
So are we spending too much?
No, it makes me wonder why you budgeted lower, are you expecting more people not to participate?
When I get a lower cost, I don't argue. Never.
Well, I'm glad you put this on the agenda.
You asked.
I, when I was getting ready to make some remarks, I noticed that, and I said, you know, but the other fifty percent, how would that be raised? If the township's doing fifty percent, how would the other fifty percent?
The township would pay for it.
Well, you'd pay one hundred percent.
That's what we're, that's what we're going to be deciding. Do you want to pay a hundred percent or continue with the fifty percent?
For a hundred percent...
Say, say that again, Bill.
That's what the board's considering, whether to pay all of the costs of the chloride or stick with the fifty percent, which we've done historically.
Well, there's some good reasons for chloriding all the roads. Number one, if this gets out to the news media, ABC, NBC, CBS, they're all looking for stories that they can, you know, put on the telly, telling everybody how one township doesn't meet the same criteria as other townships do, and that's going to affect property values. When that affects property values, being, studying and appraising like I did, I did a few appraisals, but that wasn't my thing, I was a real estate broker, brokerage, and I guess I pause to think that that's one of the main things that people who want to fight their, their taxes assessments are going to hang their hat on. If they live on a gravel road that's not being chlorided, they're going to say, I'm at a disadvantage. When a appraiser appraises a piece of property, they try to find three comparables, three comparable properties, and if it's, I'm sure, if it's on the, along the edge of the township, either Orion or Brandon or Addison, the appraiser's going to use that information on those properties.
Randy, can I ask you to sum it up and...
Sure.
Because we're, we're allowed three minutes.
It's bad news for people trying to sell houses on, on...
It wasn't bad news when they bought their house.
No, it wasn't.
I'm, I'm just being facetious.
Facetious, yeah, and, and we understand that, and so, my point is that, so that's, this is up for consideration, then.
Mm-hmm.
I say thank you. I'm going to keep...
Well, you asked for it to be put on, Randy.
I'm going to keep a positive amount of latitude, see what happens.
Well, historically, you know, the townships paid the fifty percent, and I've always voted no, but knowing that the other townships are doing it, and, you know, luckily, I'm going to pat our board on the back, luckily, not our, this board, but the ones from nineteen ninety-nine through now, are so good at watching their money, we always have a little extra, we always have a little extra for the fire department, a senior center, whatever, I think we could scrounge up another twenty-five thousand, that's just my opinion, to chloride the roads.
Thank you, thank you, and in the immortal words of my governor, fix the dang roads.
Thanks, Randy.
So let me ask you, Bill, what is the total price that, if we pay a hundred percent of it?
It's forty, forty, almost fifty thousand dollars.
The forty-nine thousand oh fifty-two? Okay.
For every dirt road.
For four applications?
Every dirt road.
Every dirt road.
If you want five applications.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Based on, based on the footage in the, in the packet, the actual amount is two hundred and one thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven feet, which equates to...
Well, you knew he was going to do that.
Yeah, I got that.
About thirty-eight, thirty-eight miles.
Yeah, I don't live on a dirt road, but I drive the dirt roads, I'd really like to see them chlorided myself, so with that, I move to rescind the motion approved at the March thirteenth, two thousand nineteen Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees meeting for chloride services, and move that the Charter Township of Oxford contract with the Road Commission for Oakland County to provide chloride services for all public gravel roads in the Charter Township of Oxford, beginning...
January first, two thousand twenty.
January first.
Because we're already into this, people pay...
Two thousand twenty, that will be paid a hundred percent by the Charter Township of Oxford for four applications of chloride.
It's moved.
Support for discussion.
Yes.
The cost for the chloride service to be expensed to accounts, is that the road?
We can, we can take it out of the roads fund, we have three hundred thousand dollars in that.
Two ninety-five, yep.
Is that correct?
Three hundred thousand, or?
Two hundred, no, five thousand.
I don't think so.
Current V S shows four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in the fund.
That's tri-party stuff you got coming, all those bills.
Four hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Well, the clerk's report said two hundred and ninety-five.
Yeah, that's not cash.
That's the two thousand seventeen audit budget, so there's been money since...
Seventeen?
One thing I would also like to bring to your attention, that M twenty-four is going to be tore up in two thousand twenty for the entire year. The best thing we can do is to make sure that Dunlap Road, that's two miles of road, dirt road, with not one house on the road, I know if I'm living in that, in this area out here, I'm going up that to avoid that whole mess, that we may, we may have to do it six or seven times, because it's going to be used a lot.
Let's visit that when we get there, let's visit that when we get there, but I, I agree with you, I think everybody's going to want to go that way.
I know I would. You've got any comment, Joe?
All the research I've done on the chloriding supposedly extends the life of the road, you know, where if you have a good chlorided road, it extends that life of the road where it gives you better years out of it, but I understand, is the Road Commission pays the pothole, paved roads to extend the life, why aren't they paid to chloride it? That's why they pave pot, I mean, that's, we have potholes in streets, so the Road Commission out there filling it, to extend the life, why does the Road Commission pay to chloride it, to extend the life?
Joe, we're having a, we're having a meeting on the fourteenth with the Road Commission, you go there and...
No, I've...
You've done it before, haven't you?
Oh, yeah, I, I get tired of the poor mouth stuff.
Jack?
Okay, first, I'm glad we moved it to twenty twenty, because right now, the Road Commission has screwed up a lot of roads in Addison and Oxford.
Oh, yeah.
I, I would suggest that we control when they chloride them and where they chloride them. I know that Noble Road was impassable for almost two weeks, and without somebody riding herd over them, they do it when they want to and when they can, they say.
That will be me.
They've disastered Lake George Road, and all the townships that they do this, and they do it at their whim, when they feel like it.
In the rain.
In the rain, in the, in the frost is coming out of it, it does no good. It's, 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 somebody needs to be assigned to tell them when to do it, it's not at their...
That'd be me.
Back and call to do it.
Because I deal with them almost daily anyhow.
Now, I could live with that, as long as you're the one steering the ship.
I'd be steering the ship, at least for that year.
Just so they don't do things like it's raining and they're chloriding it.
No, we'll, we'll have it.
Yeah, they're one count of chloride already counted, and it's nowhere to be seen, because it's up in the mud already.
And that's already one application?
It's one application, now they've put it down, and it's nowhere to be found on that road.
Okay, any other comments? Sir, you have a comment?
Yeah, I personally talked to one of the Oakland County crew that actually does the roads.
Could you just come up here and state your name for the cameras?
My name is Freddie Norman, and I live on North Coast Road.
Okay.
And I personally talked to one of the guys who was marking the roads for the chloriding, and he admitted that they did some chloriding earlier and it screwed up, okay, he told me this, so he said they learned from that, because it was supposed to grade Coast Road and chloride it where we paid for it, and he said they were going to grade it, but he said they would not chloride it till it was proper, so I think they learned a little bit.
Freddie, are they going to give you guys an extra application?
Uh, no, I think just the three.
So you lost your fourth one.
You know what, I have a meeting, I was kidding, Joe, I'm not, I was kidding, but I'm not kidding, we're having a meeting with all the muckety-mucks from the upper echelon of the Road Commission here on the fourteenth, they have a dog and pony show every year telling us how, how much money they don't have, why, why they can't do this and why can't do that, we'll bring up all these issues.
Good.
At that meeting, because we're, we got all the big shots.
Yeah, because he said they had graded one of the roads, probably Noble Road, and they chlorided it, and he said it really screwed it up bad, and he said they were going to grade our road, but he said, we're not going to chloride it, he said we're going to wait till...
You should have called Bruce Pearson from Madison Township, their supervisor, he was pulling both of his hairs out that he has left, of all the calls, especially since he lives on Noble Road, I think, is it Noble?
Yeah, my granddaughter lives up there, and that's why she said you couldn't get it in and out of there without four-wheel drive, so...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Supervisor Don?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Dur?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Lot of road issues here, now we got another road, graveling of West Davidson Lake Road.
And we don't own the road.
But you know what, historically, Jack?
I know.
I know I've gotten the Levy Corporation, and we even have somebody from the Levy Corporation here, I know, I don't want you to talk, but historically, I, I asked them to donate gravel, when things were going good, they, they would give us three and four thousand tons of gravel each year.
I know, I guess my slight comment was, is they are doing their job, and we are doing their job, we don't own a road, but we end up doing their job.
And paying for it.
You're going to have to supervise them, and we end up paying for it out of everyone's debt.
Jack, you know how I felt about this.
I do.
I, I give them hell every time I see them.
I understand that, but I'm not going to stop giving them hell, because we are in litigation with them already, and it's just dragging out, and they're, they're not right.
Well, anyhow, I got a, I got a call from some people on Davidson Lake Road, also, if anybody's been, that should have been on here, would be East Drainer, we've got a lot of stuff happening out there, and that thing is impassable like any other road, I would like to include that on your consideration. I, I don't have any hard numbers, but I think it takes about three thousand tons of gravel to take care of a road, per mile. Davidson Lake Road from what they own is like a mile and a quarter, so that's four hundred thousand, excuse me, four thousand tons. I believe East, East Drainer would be a mile from M twenty-four to Bar Road, roughly, so we got another five thousand. I think for, you know, thirty thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars, we could get all those roads paved, not paved, oh God, what did I say? What did I say? But, no, I think we can get them all, we can get them all, all gravelled. I, I hope to, we have some developers going out there, and believe me, I'm going to be hitting them up, because it's going to help them a lot, so if the, you know, we've got plenty of money in the roads, I, I wouldn't have any problem, we've done it before, we did it to Coats, we've done it to many roads, we've got seven or eight miles done, and the roads are very good until the rains come. Anyhow, what they'll do is the Road Commission, if I get the gravel, we get the gravel, they will haul it from the yard over in Ray Road, take it out, lay it, and do ditching, the ditching is hopefully to direct the water to where it's supposed to go, rather than sit on the road, but they're, they've done that for years with me, they'll, they'll do all the heavy work, so that's the history of it, yes.
I would suggest that we don't act on this and report back with your meeting from the Road Commission and see if they're willing to step up and take care of the issues.
I will tell you, they will not. I do it, I tell them every year, but their feet are dug in, but still, why should our residents be suffering for the Road Commission being stingy? Yes, Jack?
I know that this doesn't include a total, because we don't know the total length and tons needed and the amount of ditch work that's needed.
The ditch work doesn't cost us.
Okay, but none of that cost is in this proposal to do East, uh, West Davidson Lake?
The only money the Township will put out would be for, hopefully, historically, I've gotten ten dollars for, per ton, I get it for five dollars, so I get a fifty percent discount, so, and they've been great corporate neighbor.
Okay, I'm looking to add East Drainer, at least to clean some of that up, Davidson Lake Road isn't used quite as much as East Drainer is, while we do have developers coming in there and asking, and we're, we're hammering them to complete some of that road.
Contribute.
Contribute, yeah, I shouldn't have said hammered, but...
We are hammered.
Yeah, we are, I know we are, but I'd like to consider East Drainer Road in there, too, that's, that road is far more used than Davidson Lake Road, and it's also going to be used during the M twenty-four construction to get from M twenty-four to Lake George, so if we can do our part, I got with Bruce and talking about it, see what he's going to do about it, and they're all looking at it as the detour plan, so I would like to consider East Drainer Road in with this Davidson Lake Road.
Now, you're talking about Bruce, Bruce, the Township Supervisor of Addison?
Yeah.
Um, I can see the need for this, I'm just a little uncomfortable with the open-ended, no limited dollar amount on here.
They're, they're not going to do anything...
I know that you're financially responsible.
No, that's fine, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, I haven't had a chance to get together with the Levy people, so I will report back, I'll get a better number for you, maybe it won't cost us anything, I don't know, it depends how generous the Levy Corporation is.
We've got tri-party funding, I'd like to make the county pay for some of this, too.
That's what I was, my second...
We'll have to pay a third of it, let the county pay for two-thirds of it.
Yeah.
Their road, they don't own a road.
Yes.
That's why, that's why I will probably not approve this myself, because I want to hear what the Road Commission has to contribute to the problems that are here, because our what the road commission has to contribute to the problems that are here because our meeting will be next week. Um, and by the way, the, the total amount for Davis, or, yeah, Davis and Michael is...
1.4?
Uh, 6,800 feet and East Drainer Road is approximately 7,800 feet. So, you're looking at over 15,000 feet or about three miles of gravel.
Times five, 45,000?
Whatever price.
I'm hoping to get it for at least $5 a ton.
Yeah.
So, what's the board's pleasure? Do you?
Cause the email we got from the county says, "We could potentially do it 2020." No, we don't. We do it 2019.
So, would the, the board like me to continue on with the idea of fixing those roads and I can come back at the next meeting and give you more definite, uh, numbers?
I'd, I'd move for that. I would definitely second that. No question about it.
Or Kelly has no idea what was just stated and...
Whatever, whatever that motion was.
That motion was to come back at the next meeting with the, with somewhat of a...
A cost.
Good cost, doesn't it?
With the intention of taking care of those two roads.
Yes.
East, East Drainer Road and West Davison Lake Road.
Yes.
And I will support it.
Any other, other discussion? Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trusty Curtis.
Yes.
Trusty Payne.
Yes.
Trusty Nichols.
Yes.
And Trusty Dur.
Yes.
Inclusion of the Levy Company's parcels in the Water and Sewer District, uh, Water and Sewer Committee. Dick, don't forget, you know, when you see your boss, tell him I'm coming.
He already knows, Bill. He already knows. I'm Dixonati from the Edward C. Levy Company. Um, I'm a professional engineer working on land development of gravel pits that have expired as well as...
Can everybody hear him? Why don't you pull it up a little farther, Dick? You're a lot taller than, than Randy.
Randy? Um, I'll state it again. My name is Dixonati. I'm a professional engineer with the Edward C. Levy Company. I do, uh, site restoration and, um, assistant engineering of the mining. I'm here with Danielle Valona, who is also a, a mining engineer. Uh, she's, uh, learning the ropes and seeing what, what, uh, board members are really like, I think.
You trained me.
And I trained you, yes.
You laid him off.
I laid him, yeah. I won't go through that story.
Didn't fire you, laid, the only time I've ever been laid off in my life was you and I am not forgetting it.
Well, that was a pleasure for me, but I haven't forgotten it at all. You were the only one that I ever laid off.
Aren't I lucky? Go ahead, Dick. What do you, why are you here?
We're here because we have two pieces of property that we're asking for, uh, sewer and water. Uh, one for both, which is the northeast corner of M24 and Ray Road. Uh, we've, we have a 50-acre parcel that we've, uh, over the past few years built up almost to the grade of M24 that we want to, um, sell for commercial retail or other, uh, office uses. Um, but we need water and sewer to do that because the material that we've used to build it is clay, doesn't have any perkability. Uh, we think that there is capacity, in fact, the engineer Sharp did a study a couple of years ago to, to confirm that there was capacity in the Waterstone system, uh, with some alterations that we would be paying for, uh, to, uh, service this piece of property. It's approximately 50 acres. It'll require about 175 REUs. Water will come from the south, which will be the Meyer property, um, in that water main there. Sanitary sewer is available through Stony Lake Village, uh, at the very end of the cul-de-sac and would go across M24 and then go into the pump station at Waterstone. The second piece of property is what we call the Mickelson South Property, which is to the west of Waterstone or, uh, West Lake Development.
Right there.
Correct. Right there.
Across the street.
Right across the street. Uh, we already are allocated 125 REUs for the east half of the property. It was originally totally in the CAD district. The water district is, um, takes up all of the property except for a 16-acre parcel that attaches to Coates Road. That Coates Road, as you see in the diagram, does, will not require any REUs or water because it will remain, um, developed as, as a two and a half acre zoning requires or allows. Uh, the rest of the property, we're talking about, uh, potentially, uh, about 400 units that would come in as a PUD. Uh, we already have also talked to that, the, the school district about the southeast corner where you see the 25 REUs allocated, about donating that 20 acres, 25 acres to the school district for a middle school. Uh, we've been talking with them for the last two or three years and have offered that every time. As the assessments in the district get higher and they're allowed to, to do more millage, that may be a potential site for the school district and we're still interested in giving that to them, uh, so that it can add, add an anchor to this property as well as what was missing for Waterstone. If you recall, Waterstone never got a school or a school property. Um, so, we're here to add 275 REUs. The water district is already there. There's no addition to the water district in terms of capacity because the, the water district extends to the west side of the property. Uh, and we hope that this will be, uh, one of our, I think, you know, having done Waterstone myself as well, um, this site has a lot of character. It's got a 50-acre lake plus two small lakes and a portion of Whisper Lake that was mined many, many, many years ago. Uh, it's, uh, it's ready, I think, for development and it could be in a very good location right next to Waterstone attached to the old railroad grade. Uh, one of the things that would come with this property is the movement of the high-voltage lines that are in the center of it. It would move over to, um, Dunlap Road. We had, uh, Enbridge put their line on the west side, so we have a buffer all the way around east, west and, and, and east, west and, uh, north of about 90 feet to buffer and place those high-voltage lines. So, we think it's, it's going to be a, a win-win for everybody. If the school district comes, it'll be even better. So, hopefully you'll approve those extensions.
Dick came in, uh, what was it, a week ago to the Water Sewer Committee?
Yes.
And you brought a rendering and one thing I really liked about the rendering is that lake had, there was not one house on that lake. How far back would the Green Belt be around that lake? Was it 300 feet, 200 feet?
Yeah, it, it was a considerable amount just because we want to stay away from the lake as much as possible.
I've never seen that in a development where they would give up all the lake lots and have a buffer around the entire thing.
Well, there are portions of that bill that have some geotechnical issues. Uh, when I say geotechnical, there's some, the areas that sand was deposited, but a, a good portion of it, especially in the center where you see the towers, a lot of that earth is, those towers are up on pillars that were mined around. Uh, at one point, they were surrounded by water, uh, and then restored to try to get ITC, the ability to go to these towers. Um, and that, a lot of that material would move, but I think it, it works very well if we can put more public space, uh, in that property as well as the, uh, Brandon Oxford drain that runs through it. We have some wetlands, very nice contours along the wetlands that make for very good walkout locations, as well as the northern third of Whisper Lake. We own the whole, we own the whole, uh...
North end.
...rim of Whisper Lake.
And the cemetery.
So, we have a nice variety of, of, uh, we can get a nice variety of housing types from, just like Waterstone did, basically from small housing to, uh, larger housing that have a lot more amenities.
Any board comments or questions, Joe?
Does this mean they get more density on the property?
No more than they would normally get under their zoning.
Actually, I think that density is even less than the general density of Waterstone.
Oh, really? It's like you're giving up more density or anything by giving them water and sewer?
Nope.
Okay.
Now, we already, actually, we already have water and we have half or, or close to more than a third of the sewer.
Yeah.
We just want to balance the two, so we have...
Okay.
Yeah, Joe, part of it is in the sewer district, not all of it. Part of it's in the water, not all, all of it is in the water, right, Dick?
All of it is in the water.
All of it's in the water.
Except for what's over Coates Road, which would not require it.
Septic on us, uh, to, we're going to set it up.
At one point, Joe, that, that whole section was in the CAD district, if you recall the CAD district. Uh, and as time went on, as development and the development cycle dropped, I think some of that changed, but we, we own all of that property. We owned it then as Burrows Materials, we still own it.
Any other questions? Any more motion?
Jack was making.
You want me to make that?
Yep, you were starting it.
I move to approve the expansion of the sewer district to include the following parcels of property west of Dunlap Road, south of Granger Road in the sewer district. 04-20-300-011 excluding the properties located west of the body of water identified as Whisper Lake or Seymour Lake.
Moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any other questions? Roll call.
Trusty Nichols.
Yes.
Trusty Dur.
Yes.
Trusty Payne.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
And Trusty Curtis.
Yes. I move to approve the expansion of the sewer district and approve the extension, expansion of the water district to include the following parcels of property north of Ray Road, east of M24 Highway. Part of parcel 04-15-100-001 and part of 04-15-503-001. The drawings and property description identifying this property as provided by the property owner to be included as an appendix to the minutes. Further, Sharp Engineering is authorized to update the sewer district map and update the water district map showing these additions to the sewer district and the water district.
Support.
Moved and supported. That's Elgin Nichols for the support. Questions? Roll call.
Trusty Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trusty Payne.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Trusty Dur.
Yes.
And Trusty Nichols.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jack, I'm going to let you take over on this one. Approval of REUs for M24 water main easement.
Oh, since you did all the work, you're going to make me read the, read the minutes. No, I, as, as we have approved, uh, at seeking out the, uh, water main construction easements on M24, a couple of property owners brought forward to the Water and Sewer Committee some logical concerns about the, um, number of REUs we had approved for their properties. And, uh, one of them is Oxford Free Methodist Church, which has two buildings on the property and Community Insurance Center, which can have two on the property. They have approached us and said they've requested some additional REUs for consideration of this easement. So, the Water and Sewer, uh, Committee, uh, met with them and for the Oxford Free Methodist Church, we were going to provide, um, two water connection REUs and for Community Insurance Center, we were going to add, uh, make their offer at 1.4 water connection REUs. Um, this was done based on the size of the properties and the number of buildings on the properties.
Any questions? Motion?
I move to prove to provide 2.00 water connection residential equivalent units, REUs, to the Oxford Free Methodist Church, property identified as parcel number 0426353019 and approve to provide 1.40 water connection REUs to the Community Insurance Center property identified as, uh, PO426353026. That's compensation for easement acquisition for the placement of water main. These REU approvals for parcels 0426353019 and 0426353026 supersede the motion approved at the February 13th, 2019 Oxford Township Board Trustees Meeting regarding the water main easement acquisitions.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trusty Dur.
Yes.
Trusty Payne.
Yes.
Trusty Curtis.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trusty Nichols.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Jack, I might surprise you on this one.
You what?
I might surprise you here. Approval of engineering fees for M24 sanitary sewer design.
Okay, I'm going to ask Engineer Sharp to come up and if he has any concerns that I'm not speaking about correctly, he'll interject, I'm sure, but what is happening is in 2020, we're tearing up M24. Uh, from Drainer Road north to Harriet is a complete tear-up, dig-up and rip-up of the holes, right to the dirt. Now, they're going to replace the storm sewer in the, in the villages, they're going to add our water main down south of the village. And through all this, we've had a couple of interests in, uh, coming to Oxford. One is the Beaumont Hospital Systems. Uh, two is the addition of Levy to the Water Sewer District north of Ray Road. And this timeline is so strict in order to get this done, we are working co, in conjunction with about five meetings in the next week and a half. Uh, we're meeting with the village next Tuesday, we're meeting with Levy on Wednesday, we're setting up a meeting with Beaumont next week. Um, we have an estimate from the engineer and what we'd like to do is we're proposing to run a sewer line from Oakdale where the interceptor is met up to Harriet. While the road is tore up, we can install a, a 18-inch...
That's what we have a sized at right now, correct?
Correct, 18-inch sewer main, which will be solely dedicated to the north developments of Oxford Township. Currently, we are limited by flow through the village and we need to pump to other areas where our sewers are. If these Beaumont property would pump up to the wet, uh, east and, uh, the new, uh, Abbey Ridge condos have to pump to the east, uh, possibly Levy property pumping to the east, all these pump stations are, are liabilities. Sure, the developer puts them in, but the township is responsible. In 2019 and 2020, approximately $300,000 is going to be spent on maintenance to these pump stations that currently exist. So, to prevent that, several members came up with the idea of while the roads tore up, why don't we put a, a new sewer line in? There's no more capacity, the lines are old, we have to move them with pump stations so to, to prepare for the future in the northern developments, we, we came up with the idea of doing this. The problem is, we're up against the deadline. When do we have to kick off the designers? June 1st?
Yeah, yeah, that, I mean, you need to give, uh, an approval to MDOT as soon as possible.
Yes. So, we're a meeting with all these people and the village in order to make this come to fruition if this board so elects to approve that, but what you're doing is taking liability from the future and getting rid of it. You're allowing for the, the, the better flow and better use of the system, uh, by putting this new main in while the road is tore up. Uh, usually in the past, if any improvements to sewer systems were made, the roads are there, they go right ahead and they tear the road up, put it in, now you got another tore-up road for a year. So, we're trying to jump the gun on this and get it going. What we're asking for tonight from the, the trustees is to approve approximately, uh, not, not to exceed, what, 54,000?
Yes.
Yeah, I just saw everybody's, it's 54,700. The design won't actually be done by my firm. We've, uh, relinquished that to AE Comm, who is the design engineer for MDOT, just because of the expeditiousness that needs to occur. They have the information regarding water main crossings, storm sewer crossings, all those other things. It would, we would not, uh, most likely be able to accomplish it, uh, in the timeline that they are looking for.
And the village...
Take a lot of coordination, so in the best interest of the community, I'm allowing my firm, we're, we're basically giving that away to AE Comm to do.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
So, if, if we are approved tonight for this money, at what point can we stop before, if, if the village said, "No, you can't come through here" or if Levy said, "No, we don't wanna participate," or Beaumont's not coming, or all this, what is our drop dead stop where we don't spend all the $54,000?
No, based on the conversations that we had, it would be no different than working with my firm. You tell them to stop, they're gonna bill you for the work that they've accomplished to date, and then it ends at that point.
Okay.
If, if you start going through the process and the meetings with Beaumont and Levy don't proceed the way that you want, you can, you can shut it down at any time.
Yep. And as fast as we're working, it's hard to get through to some of these big corporations, not Levy, but Beaumont. Uh, it took me two weeks to finally get ahold of the ambulatory care expansion people and talk positively about what they're looking for. So to protect our systems and protect the REUs that we have out there today, assign to the properties in the north, this is a, is, um, is a future planning, uh, project that'll protect our water, our sewer and our groundwater from any contamination in the future.
Yeah, ultimately, all the sewage, wherever it flows in the township, worked its way down to Indian Lake Road and M-24.
We give it all to Orion.
Yeah.
Uh, that isn't, that isn't all the cost, so we have to, uh, if we...
It is.
I'm gonna get next.
Okay.
So, yeah, what, unfortunately, we only have so much capacity, we have sewers on both the east and west side of M-24 that go into the village. We have certain capacity limitations there. And we're not gonna take away from future developments, you know, there's vacant parcels on M-24 already. Those capacities are spoken for. And so if this facility, this Beaumont facility that's being thrown around out there, if, if it comes, there would not be enough capacity in the existing sewer systems to accommodate, and that's the reason for this design here. The village system will not be connected to this whatsoever, it's just a straight-through pipe from the north side of the village to the south side of the village. It would allow them the opportunity, maybe if, if they have issues with their sewer system down the road, 20, 30, 50 years from now, they could connect in. Um, but all the costs would be borne by the township and the village would really have no, um, you know, wouldn't have any financial obligations to it whatsoever. There is, uh, even though we're just passing through the village and it is within the M-24 right-of-way, we still do need approval from the village to go through their system. And I spoke with, uh, the village manager, and depending on how this goes tonight, um, he's putting together a package to put it on the council meeting for next...
Tuesday.
And myself and Jack will be at that meeting at the village council.
And Engineer Sher...
So that's kind of the overview and the reason for it, and the reason behind it, that we just don't have enough capacity going through the village's systems, uh, in order to accom, accommodate this development, should it, should it move forward.
Well, we have not addressed, uh, we're addressing the beak of the bird right now, the rest of the chicken out there is the cost of the installation of this sewer system. Uh, Jim, have you worked up some cost on that?
Yeah, it's on that sheet at the top, I mean, we just use a rough estimate of about $100 a foot, you're looking at about a little over a mile of sewer, so, you know, it'd be close to $750,000, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
Uh, when the construction comes.
And for $750,000, Curtis, we have approximately 2.9...
3.4.
Yeah, 2.9 cash flow in the township.
Cash flow.
Cash. And then we have reserve for maintenance at the Oakland County.
Roughly a million.
And we have a million at the county. So what we're doing is investing in the future with this sewer line, so that we don't have liabilities to the community later on. So, yes, tonight, we're asking for 54,000, not to exceed 54,700. At any time where we wanna balk or quit, we'll stop. But we do have the funds in the water sewer, or the sewer funds to put that sewer in and do it right for the future, so, uh, that's, that's my spiel.
I move that the Charter Township of Oxford approve engineering design plans for the option of installing a sanitary sewer line in conjunction with the M-24 highway road reconstruction project. The cost for the engineering design fees to be expensed as sewer fund account 590-527-973.002, sewer extensions. Further, Sharp Engineering is authorized to work with any Michigan Department of Transportation representatives and consultants to make sure the sanitary sewer design is part of the M-24 highway road reconstruction project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I will say that I'm on the fence with this. I'll just leave it at that, and we'll see how I vote.
I, uh, just a quick thing, I, regardless of whether Beaumont comes through or not, that's a lot of property right there that could be developed.
Exactly.
To something, eventually, if there are services there.
If Beaumont doesn't come, Jack, what do they think? It's gonna be a smaller project with the possibility of an add-on. I'll leave it to you.
I, I can give you an update on that, because we did talk to the boss, and he said that if they get their certificate of need approved, it's June or July 1st now, um, they will build a hospital. If they don't get the certificate of need and/or there is a suit with Henry Ford, McLaren, or anybody else that feels they would like to come here, also, they will build an ambulatory care, uh, surgical center, uh, emergency room here in Oxford. So we will be re, getting monies back from them, uh, they are coming. And they purchased the land, I talked today to the land agents, uh, they're waiting to clear up one niche in the title from transfer from American Aggregates to, uh, Knoth, and then Knoth to Cossack. And once they get that done, it'll be a done deal. So, they're coming, and it's, it's, uh...
So there's something going?
Yeah, it's a diamond right now for, for the community.
Any other questions? Joe?
In addition, we also mentioned, just what Margie said, we also have an older subdivision in that area.
Brad Dooley.
Have some issues, that hopefully everything works out great, but in case something happens with their septic systems, we gotta be ready to act.
Very true. Now, in conjunction with that, there are others legs of the plan that we can't talk about yet, because, I, I mean, that, we have to recommend it to this board, but there are recommendations on cost and how to recover it, or put these costs in place before we put the sewer line in, and until those are done, you know, I just don't wanna dump them out on the floor for everybody to jump on, so...
And, and you will have an opportunity, I mean, even though you're authorizing MDOT to proceed with the design, um, if, again, if things don't materialize, as long as you let them know before the MDOT bid goes out, which is gonna be around December or January, you could always say, "We don't wanna do the sewer," and they just pull those sewer plans out of there, and then you're not responsible to spend the, the seven, you know, $750,000 or whatever it is. You will have paid for the design fees, obviously, but not necessarily the construction.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
There's a motion on the second.
Was?
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Supervisor Dunn.
Oh, reluctantly, yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Right, yes. Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
I think Jack laid out the case very well, yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Yes, I do wanna mention that, I'm not gonna tell you whose idea this was, but it's forward planning, and, uh, it, it was done for the protection of the citizens, the health, well, uh, safety and welfare, we have failing systems, and I'm glad we all understand that and why we're doing this. Thank you.
Let's move on.
You're gonna get me on this one.
We're getting to some exciting stuff now, liability insurance services. Clerk Wright.
Yes, the current insurance company has, uh, failed us on a couple occasions, and they're failing us right now, so, it was put on the agenda to, to determine whether or not we wanna shop our services with our liability insurance company, so it's on the table for discussion.
Is it just the one issue that we're unhappy with them with?
No, previous.
Two?
Uh, we had a well.
Two out of three.
We had a well, we got...
Okay, another wood drill.
Yeah, two out of three, two out of, three out of four claims were denied, or two out of three.
Two out of three major.
Two out of three major claims were denied to the township that, from our insurance agent, that our attorney, all attorneys were saying should be approved. And we're now gonna go shopping for an insurance company that we can pay all this money to that might cover us under a, an insured infraction.
Is that it?
You could always look into it, the recommendation.
I believe that, uh, you should look into different insurance companies, I, I don't think you wanna get burned more than, what, three times?
Think you'd learn.
Yeah, you think you would.
That's why we're here.
So, what's the board's pleasure?
Do the legwork and come back with a recommendation?
Yep.
You got a consensus.
Curtis loves that insurance stuff.
He'd love it.
There was no names mentioned.
He loves the stuff. Get a spreadsheet up, ready for us, Curtis.
I'll make a motion, motion to direct Clerk Wright to, uh, work with, uh, possible liability insurance carriers, uh, meet with, uh, various ones that cover local municipal government entities, and come back to the township board with a recommendation on, once that's completed.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? CB, CDBG bid for emergency services.
Uh, board members, this is kind of a standard thing we do every year. We're looking at emergency services, awarding that over to Fish. I'll make a motion that the Oxford Township Board Trustees awards the emergency services bid for 2018 Community Development Block Grant Fund, CDBG, Mount 11,826, Oxford, Orient Fish, authorized CDBG Coordinator Joseph G. Ferrari, assigned the applicable documents and proposal ratification.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Yes.
This 2018 money's being spent in 2019, correct?
Whatever block grants, yes.
Yeah.
Block grants always.
It's the block rate, okay.
Sometimes they're behind, sometimes they're ahead.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Uh, roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur.
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
On to more exciting stuff, uh, 2019 West Nile virus program. Treasurer Ferrari.
Uh, board members, I know, uh, we've kinda done this every year, this is kinda what we're looking at doing this year, the mosquito dunks, Cutter Sensations, and the tablets for the parks. Uh, with that, I'll make a motion to purchase 11 cases of the mosquito dunks, 12 by 2 packs, 504-24 includes shipping, 3 cases of the Natural XRT tablets for 2,584-84 includes shipping, and 20 cases of HG9585 for Cutter Sensations, 1 ounce travel size pump spray for 772-80. Total project expenditure is 3,0864-88, with 3,0820-11, coming from the Oakland County West Nile Virus Prevention Grant, account number 101-072-006, and $44.77 coming from Oxford Township General Fund, account number 101-299-880-001.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Then I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, authorizing the West Nile Virus Fund expense reimbursement request, as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oxford Village Summer Tax Collection.
Uh, board members, as you know, uh, I think for like this, last five or six years, we've done the posting for Oxford Village, uh, for their taxes, they'd like to have us do it again this year. Uh, they've already passed it at their end, I said it's lost to be approved by my township board, so if you're still in favor of it, I'll make a motion, authorize Treasurer Joseph G. Ferrari to execute the agreement for Oxford Village tax PSNA postings as presented, tax of form agreement to the minutes.
Support.
Moved and supported. Uh, roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
And Trustee Dur.
Yes.
No items were removed from the consent agenda, so it's on to public comment. Is there any public comment?
Yes.
Linda, I'm, I'm gonna have, like everybody, we have you come up, because we got a TV audience out there.
My name is Linda Van Houten, I live at 2253 Shipman Road, the holy road, you'll find us easy. Um, I've been in the township over 30 years. Since Waste Managed, or not Waste Management, Oddjob has left us with no pickup, the neighbors and myself, we have tried all day finding someone. Waste Management is not taking new customers. Another service we tried, the building is for sale. And, uh, another one, uh, Community Disposal Services will not take new customers until the beginning of June. We've done everything we possibly can, we've been on the phones all day, we cannot find anyone. I do have a burn permit, which I will not use to burn my garbage. We live on 14 acres, my husband says, "We'll dig a hole in the back half of the 14 acres." No, 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 that'll never happen. Is there any chance the township can help us out with some resolution? We live on our beautiful, well, I wouldn't say always, beautiful, people are gonna look for a place to dump their garbage. We have lanes going into hayfields, the, um, big, um, hunt farms there on Hammer Lake Road, that's gonna be a total dumping area, we're afraid. We do not want to see dumping on our roads, we have enough of that already. Is there any chance we could get some help from you guys?
We are not going to comment on your comment until we go on to board trustee comments, and you'll probably get an answer then.
Could we amend the motion agenda to add this stuff?
No. Come on up.
We do it now. Do whatever we want, we're the board.
I'm Monica Rowe, hi, building. I live at 2578 North Coats Road, and I did find a company, it's called Advanced Disposal. They just called me before I left for the meeting. They have, I asked him if they can take on all of the people in our area, and they said, "Yes, they can." So, I've got their numbers.
We have, we have that already on the list.
Yeah, I think they're already on the list.
Yeah, yeah, I have their number, and I just talked to them. They are based out of Milwaukee, but they have areas, you know, that they take care of in here. Um, another thing that I have a question about, who put in Oakwood Road?
Who put in, what do you mean?
Paved it.
The Road Commission.
The Road Commission?
They own the roads, we don't.
Okay, because they don't have an approach coming down to Coats Road, and...
Your husband retired from the Road Commission.
For the Road Commission, I tried to get him to come tonight.
Well, but you know what, he can call down there, he knows how to call.
We have, I, I've put in three online complaints.
Why don't you call me?
Apron.
Call me tomorrow or Friday.
Call you tomorrow or Friday?
Yeah, just remind me.
Okay, 'cause they said just have all your neighbors call the Road Commission and complain about the roads and the apron.
Actually, again, I'm going, I'm not supposed to be commenting, I'm gonna be meeting with the big, the bigwigs.
Okay.
On the 14th. That'll be part of it.
Because they make the, the shoulder of the road is right at the white line, and it's supposed to be extended on hills, and it's not. At Coats Road, it just comes and you turn a sharp curve right onto Coats Road, so we need an approach, and we need that apron fixed.
And I fished with your husband in northern Ontario in a fly-in 50 years ago.
I have pictures.
I have pictures, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd affect the board for their action on, on the road, um, clarity on the roads, and for Linda, there's a book that says, "Ask and you shall receive."
Thank you, Randy. Any other public comment? Ma'am? I don't mean to call you ma'am, but I don't, don't know your name.
Hi, my name's Virginia Gwenden, and I live, actually, Brandon Township, but I'm right on the line here, and I have numerous health issues, and I have to just say, I am so happy about Beaumont, because it takes me, when I'm, when my heart acts up at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, and I have to have an ambulance ride to, uh, Crichton, it takes a long time to get there, and it seems like forever for me. So, I'm just, it, I just wanna let you know, I was so happy, I, I blew up my Facebook page when I was like, "Oh, yes."
I'm sure the, uh, fire department's happy, instead of taking an ambulance ride, they're just gonna wheel the gurneys down the road.
Right, right.
Dump them into the hospital.
Yeah. But I, I did just wanna say that, and, uh, and I know what you guys are going through with the garbage, 'cause we are too, and, and I was just told that, um, sorry, Addison and the other one were bought out by Waste Management, so I don't, it's a 2020.
We'll give you an update in our comments.
Thanks.
Any other comment? Uh, board comments. Joe?
Speaking about the whole garbage issue, I've, we've kinda talked about it during, in the office a couple different times. We've act, I've actually got quotes from one, from the roll-off, 1-800 roll-off, where they could provide us dumpsters at the office, like compost or regular, give us $100 off at 345 each. The problem is, I mean, it's a great theory, the problem is, how do you police it? But see, you can't, you can't get everybody together that quick, and two, the tough thing about that is, we're responsible.
This is not, we're not adding, we're not going to add an agenda item, so this is comments.
See, the problem we run into is, let's say somebody, and I wish it wasn't this way, but of every group, there's always one or two people that hear about things, they're like, oh, they're having a dumpster in front of the office? Oh, it's going to be there all night? I've always had these, you know, barrels in my house that I want to get rid of, of paint thinner. All of a sudden, nobody's there, and middle of the night, we look in there, we're a super fun site now.
He don't put his P F A.
That's the problem. I mean, I don't mind having it, but the problem is, how would you police it? And then none of us are certified. I mean, somebody could be putting in things we have no idea. They go to dump it, sets off alarms saying, we can't take that. And that's the problem, too. So we've been trying to make more of a concerted effort to talk to the local garbage companies, putting it on our website to say, these guys are available, like Advanced Waste Management, GF, GFL, or GFI, whatever they are. So it's like, we're kind of stuck in the middle, trying to figure all that out. Like I said, I talked about it, and Bill first thinks, who's going to police it? That's the issue. If I could trust that it would only be garbage, and only be lawn and leaves, no problem.
Tires.
Exactly.
Even tires. We'll take tires.
Well, that's what I'm afraid of, having so many things that line up costing you $15,000 by the time we're done. Because everyone's going to dump things that they have to pay for.
Is that it, Joe?
Well, I got other things, too, but I don't know if you want to...
I'd like to come, you know, comment on the girls in the office. They've been receiving all these calls about waste manager, or the garbage pickup, and they have called numerous companies, and ones that said they weren't going to do it are now going to do it. If you go on to the webpage, you will see the ones, I know Advanced is one. Do you have any more, Joe?
The one was Community.
Community?
They're not accepting anymore. We called them.
No, but we called some today that weren't accepting. Now they are.
Community is going to be accepted. I talked to them just yesterday.
We talked to them at 5 o'clock today.
Well, they told me, he told me.
And they said, no.
Well, yesterday.
It's a free-for-all. We can't, I can't...
But they are going to be accepted. I talked to the owner of the company.
As I understand it, because all the Facebook postings is going on, as I understand it, this company's accepting, and then everybody jumps on it, and now they're no longer accepting. So they seem to be filling up their, what they're allowing for how many people they can take on. Each of the companies have said, we've taken as many people as we can possibly manage.
Everybody's turning to us and yelling at us and screaming, but there's little we can do. We have nine employees here at the office, we have no DPW, and the girls refuse to go out and pick up garbage. So we're in a pickle, but we're trying, the girls are trying as hard as they can to come up with people to pick up this garbage.
Advanced is another one.
They said they would today.
They called us today. They had, yeah, I remember.
Well, give us a call, give us a call tomorrow.
And throughout this whole garbage debate, too, there's also been talk, like going to Orion's route, what about a single hauler? We've kind of discussed it. That's got to be resident-driven. If residents come to us and say with a petition, like you would with weed control, you know, anything like that, that says, hey, there's, you know, 20, you know, 2,000 of us that want a single hauler. We put on the ballot, the voters decide. To me, it should be resident-driven.
Well, I say we get to work on that.
Let the residents come to us.
Yeah, if they come to us with petitions, saying this is what we want to consider.
Okay, let's start with Elgin.
Just one thing to say, this board works for you, as you can see. That's all I have to say.
Patty?
Nothing.
Curtis?
I'll echo your sentiments, because, you know, the front-line office definitely worked the tails off to answer these questions of people you don't know who's calling and the attitudes they're calling with, so I give them a lot of credit for the last three days that they've put up with this for somebody else's issue. And I commend the residents as well for having patience, the ones that do. The other thing I want to mention is that the Pallion Trail was recently designated as a pure Michigan trail. It's a huge designation for the community of Oxford, Orion, Addison Townships, so now that will allow us to get more grants for the trail. And if you haven't been on the trail, you'll see how nice and pristine it's been looking since we've got a trail manager that takes a lot of pride in what she does. So if you're not on the trail and you use it, go ahead and give us any feedback that you want to see things done, but she's out there enough that she'll probably beat you to it. Thank you.
Jack, go down there.
Okay, update. We're working with a state mediator on the firefighters' union issues. We still don't have a contract, but we have the state mediator working with us. I'm having a meeting next Friday with the 2020 Census, Linda Clark, that's coming up to our community. She's going to be, she's the coordinator out of Chicago that runs the Michigan office for the 2020 Census. So I'll have an update for the folks here the next meeting after I meet with her. And they all stole my thunder, because the first day that I heard that Oddjob went out, Tracy, Susan, everybody jumped on it. And, you know, it's funny, when people come up to the counter, this is your counter. You know, why would you come up there counter-intuitively, being mean to people that are trying to help you? We have folks coming in with cameras stuffed in your face, trying to get answers on things, and all it does is it causes no one to do anything. I mean, we're going to do what's right, but you can't come in here demanding, sticking, and making everybody mean. This is a job for people. Show some respect when you come in here. Not, you know, these girls and guys work so hard to get things done in the community. It's not always what you hear. Stop in sometime and watch some of your citizens come to this counter and see how they act. You'll be surprised. Thank you.
We've got you all here tonight at once, and we can yell at everybody.
Certainly.
I'm going to yell at you if you interrupt again.
I'm sorry.
Show her your hammer.